Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Dahl Ketter.
Here.
Murren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Faust.
Yeah.
File.
Here.
Okay, for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
I'll be abstaining from voting on the consent agenda because of my involvement with Forkfest.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Council member Dahl Ketter abstaining, motion carries.
I look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So move, your honor.
Second.
No discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Takes us to item number twenty-two, special presentation, proclamation for July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as the arc of Norfolk's sixty-fifth anniversary. Whereas the arc is a presence for direct advocacy in school systems, assisting families in ensuring free and appropriate public education, and with adults in navigating the developmental disabilities division of Nebraska Health and Human Services. And the arc of Norfolk runs a variety of programs, provides workshops and training to self-advocates and parents, and organizes social and recreational programs that involve approximately two hundred and fifty individuals. And the arc believes that every citizen, regardless of his or her developmental disability, has the right to live, work, learn, play, worship, and serve others within the local community, and also believes that with the proper supports, a high quality of life can be possible for everyone. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me do hereby proclaim July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as the arc of Norfolk's sixty-fifth anniversary, and encourage citizens to recognize and congratulate the arc for its achievements in advocating rights of developmentally disabled citizens. Is there anyone here tonight to receive the proclamation?
I don't know the first person up there.
Yes, please. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Would you like to take a moment to say something about?
Sure. I'd love to.
Introduce yourself.
Okay. I'm Kayla Longauer. I am the executive director for the Arc of Norfolk. And we advocate for citizens with disabilities and their families. We want everyone to know that no matter your disability, they're afforded the same rights as non-disabled people. We hold events and sponsor those events. There's usually seven events throughout the year, dinners that self-advocates and their families and staff members can attend. Anybody from the community that's wanting more information, feel free to contact me. I'd love to answer any questions I think I can have.
Thank you very much. Okay, the regular agenda, item number twenty-three, I would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to T.R. Harris Construction Incorporated of Homer, Nebraska, for the Johnson Park Trail Connector project for an amount of one hundred and thirty-four nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Steve, can you give us some background on this, please?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, this project would connect the Johnson Park Trail Project from the railroad along First Street, south, along the river, kind of following that contour of the river, and then reconnect back in over to First Street at the bridge there on First Street. We had four bids for the project. Bids ranged from the one hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-four, which was low, to a high of one hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. After review of the bids, the engineer of record, JEO, is recommending award to the low bidder in our construction for one hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars and fourteen cents. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Okay, questions proceed from there? Steve, is the timeline on this in conjunction and coordination with the completion of the rest of the trail?
Right now, we're waiting for some migratory birds to leave, so before we would be able to get in there and do whatever tree removal would be necessary. And so probably, I'd say at the earliest, would be August first. I'd say the latest we'd start would be about September first.
Okay.
Completion would be this year.
Okay, Steve? Any discussion, council? Seeing none, please vote.
All councilmen present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, item twenty-four, I look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five, fifty-four, annexing attractive land generally located at the southwest quadrant of Highway two seventy-five and Twenty-Fifth Street. As a note, ordinance number fifty-five, fifty-four passed on first reading at the June eighteenth city council meeting and on second reading at the July second city council meeting.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-five, fifty-four.
Okay, motion second, and no discussion on third reading, so council, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five, fifty-four carries on third reading.
Item number twenty-five, looking for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five, fifty-five, approving a zoning change from R-one, single-family residential district, to R-three, multiple-family residential district, on property generally located a quarter-mile north of the intersection of South Victory Road and East Omaha Avenue. Ordinance number fifty-five, fifty-five passed on first reading only at the July second city council meeting.
Your Honor, I move consideration of ordinance number fifty-five, fifty-five on second reading.
Second.
Okay, and Val, could you refresh our memory on this, please?
Yes, thank you. This is the eighteen to nineteen acre piece of property on the west side of Highway thirty-five, just north of the Highway thirty-five and two seventy-five intersection. And the request was from R-one to R-three for a potential hundred and sixty-unit apartment complex going there. And like I said, it passed on first reading at last council meeting, so this is the second.
Okay, thank you, Val. Council, any questions, comments?
I would just like to say that I have listened to a lot of the residents' concerns and empathize with you, and I respect your opinions. And I take that into consideration when I make my votes. But I also want you to know that the city of Norfolk will continue to grow, and it's also going to continue to look for opportunities to grow, and it's not going to stop. So change is an inevitable part of life, and I know there's not a lot of opportunities for you guys in this situation, but I just hope that you can focus on what you have to gain instead of what you have to lose. I also want you to know that the city has been working for many years to recruit developments like this in the Norfolk area, and a lot of communities would jump at this opportunity to have this in their community. So I guess the last thing I would say as a reminder, this is a zoning change request, and this is a long process. So I continue to encourage you to work alongside the city staff and council, voice your concerns respectfully, and it's our job to listen to your concerns. And then at the end of the day, I hope that we can all respect each other and our opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Any other comments or discussion, council?
Well, again, your honor, as noted at the last meeting and as just stated here, this is a zoning change request. And if you look at zoning, education of the, and how you're supposed to develop on out from high-traffic areas down to lower-single-family areas, this is the poster child of how this is supposed to happen. And so it's not really suited for single-family adjacent to the highway traffic stuff. The way it sets on up and the way multifamily works is that the noise, and that can be abated from that area by design of the units around through there. So again, this is a zoning change and has nothing really to do with some of the other objections that were brought up as to some of the other legs of business that the developer has, so.
Councilman? Any other comments or questions on the issue? We did have a public hearing on this a couple of weeks ago, as we all remember, and that hearing did run the course of many thoughts and concerns on this topic. And as both councilmen have alluded to, this is just one portion of the process, considering the zoning change at this time. I do want to, even though we're not in public hearing, given that it is important that we take into account public input, open to any discussion that can add, that might add to what we did not cover at the public hearing a couple weeks ago, that pertains specifically to the zoning change question at hand. So if there's anyone interested in contributing to discussion in that way, they're welcome to at this point.
Your Honor, esteemed council members, I'm Marty Flugger, in case you forgot. We handed a few of these already. So I realize we're only talking about a zoning change, but I think we all know that the natural progression here is, once the zoning change is done, it's going to just keep going forward. And really, I understand, you know, things change, like you said, Jared, and, you know, and we have to accept that change and deal with it. I think one of the things that really is hard to take for us, I know it is, well, it is for me anyway, and I think a lot of my neighbors feel the same way, that I don't remember which one of you said that if you're in city limits, you're going to be on city, water, and sewer. But we've been in city limits for over thirty years, and why wasn't this done when, before this development took shape, you know? Now it comes in after everybody's established, and, you know, the, I'm sure it's going to be a harder project to do. And I guess, you know, I don't want to be mean about this, but we feel like we're feeling the ramifications of the fact that the city was derelict in their duties of supplying that at that time. Now, I don't know the reason why, and I'm sure most of you weren't even on the council at that time, or, I don't know how many of you have been on for that long. None of you? Okay, so I can't blame you. But, I mean, and I feel like we haven't got a lot of really good answers as to how we're going to approach this and how this is going to get worked out. It's kind of like, you know, trust us. And I'm a little leery of that, because I have heard from a couple of people who have tried to, you know, do some things or dealt with the city, and they had to get a lawyer in order to do what was legally, you know, they were legally able to do, because he felt like you guys weren't being upfront and honest with him on all points. And so it's, you know, it doesn't create a good, you know, good feel here. And, I don't know, Dan's not here, is that easy? Okay, I did have one question for Dan, and that was, I guess I was wondering what, I've talked to some people that know him, and he's a great guy. I mean, he's, as you guys probably know, I'm sure you've dealt with him a lot, because he has quite a number of properties in downtown Norfolk, and I'm sure through the course of that, he has had to deal with you guys. And I'm sure you have a good relationship with him. But, and he's very, from what I hear, he's very active in his church and things like that, so, I mean, I have no problem. But I guess I was going to suggest to him, as I guess a sign of good faith to us, if he's going to really try to get this thing going over there, there's a really nice ten-acre piece of ground right off of Highway eighty-one, about ten acres, that you could put, you could put half as many, again, units in there. It's already next to an apartment complex, and Dan happens to own that piece of ground, it's right next to his house. So I put that to him, if he really wants to get into, you know, development of, if Norfolk needs that kind of housing, I think that would be a great spot. It's pretty close to the highway, which is this other one is, and I think that, you know, that could really add a lot to the housing shortage in Norfolk. So, but anyway, I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Marty. While I want to underscore that we are considering the question at hand, which is the zoning change, I'll address just a couple of things. You're right, Marty, the typical process in this is a portion of the city that's not within the city boundaries is annexed or comes into the city limits, and those city services, in typical cases, are supposed to be provided for that area in a specific amount of time. And so we don't know what happened thirty years ago. You're right, none of us was part of that decision, but we do have the responsibility now to address it in terms of a growing city. The other thing I wanted to mention is, you talked about someone needing a lawyer to address the city on matters. I want to assure you that you should not need to seek legal representation to communicate with your city government, and that is never our aim. And I think we've put a high priority on being as upfront as possible. I know processes are never sometimes perfect, but do want you to know that we will listen through this process. Again, we have to walk it through on a step-by-step basis, but I think city staff has demonstrated that their doors open, and the elected officials do want to hear from you on this, as painful as the process sometimes can be. So I just wanted to say that. We'll take any other discussion at this point, if there's any.
Shaun Langmeyer, eight oh two Channel Road. I realize this is, we're talking about a zoning change, and that's all fine and good. I feel as though the water and sewer is going to happen regardless. There's no change in here, is what it is. My question is, if we need so much housing, and apparently nobody in our neighborhood wants this apartment complex, instead of changing from R-one to R-three, R-two, town homes, condos, they seem to be going over real well next to the college. I know Mom was looking for a place to retire, and she wanted to move to Norfolk, and was looking for a town home, couldn't find it. That would be, instead of being four hundred people living next door, maybe two hundred. Would this not be an option? So I feel as though an apartment complex is not going to benefit me, not going to help me. I don't understand when they say how this is good for you, being a neighbor to this apartment complex. If somebody wants to explain that to me, that's fine. I've emailed every city council member here, I got one reply. And if that's the council listening and responding to the city or to the residents, I don't think that's very good behavior. Thank you.
Any shot? Anyone else? I see we do have the developer here today, and we talked about this some last time, but Josh, there's a question about density and why R-three here. Would you mind refreshing us again on what your plans are in terms of phasing on this project and number of units involved?
I am Josh Vickery, sorry. The, this is considered in Omaha as a low-density project, because the majority of apartment complexes that are going up now are thirty-six plexes or larger. These are smaller aplexes to look like houses. And, you know, we've built these in the past, and they've done very well in the Quad Cities. So that's what we know, and that's why we are sticking with the aplexes.
And how many total units proposed?
Hundred sixty.
All right, any questions for Josh while he's up here? Thank you. Right. If there's no further discussion, council, comments or discussion before we vote? Seeing none, I will ask for your vote. Oh, sorry, title, yes, sorry.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Now, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance fifty-five, fifty-five on second reading, council members Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Murren, Jackson, Faust, File, voting against the ordinance on second reading, council member Dahl Ketter. Ordinance fifty-five, fifty-five carries on second reading.
Okay, item number twenty-six, I look for a motion to consider resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirty-six approving a sidewalk waiver for JMOA Investments LLC at sixteen-twenty North Thirty-seventh Street.
Your Honor, I move to consider resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirty-six.
Second.
Motion second. Val, could you give us some background on this, please?
Yes, thank you. This sidewalk waiver was tabled almost a year ago. The original sidewalk waiver was requesting both a north and south parcel. This is on Thirty-seventh Street, just south of Golf View. That was denied, and they came back again and requested the sidewalk waivers. They put in the sidewalk on the northern parcel, and that's when it was tabled so that it would remain active, so that they could come back and still request a waiver on the southern lot. And that is what is before you today, is the sixteen-twenty, I believe, North Thirty-seventh Street. So I guess it's up to you. I mean, we've been trying to figure out potentially a way to connect, but I believe a subcommittee gave us directions to talk to the golf course, and we did do that, but we haven't gotten any farther than initial discussions.
Val, can you relay to us what the planning commission decision on this was?
The discussion at planning commission, there were two things that really got brought up. One was, they didn't necessarily want to see, quote, "a sidewalk to nowhere," because we couldn't give a definite, it's going to connect in a year, it's going to connect in two years, or a timeframe to that. And then the other discussion that they had was, is it something that we should put on future, the future homeowner? Or is this something that should have been part of the pro forma already of the developer and builder of the house, that it should just be done by them? And it wasn't a unanimous vote, it was a five-to-two vote to approve it.
Okay, thank you, Val. So we have the owner of the property here tonight.
I had some of you around us last time. I don't know if this is standard, but it brings some maps and pictures of what we're talking about, so. I'll sign in here in a second. So the main reason...
Megan, I'm sorry, we need you at the microphone when you're talking.
I know a lot of you were in the discussion, or on the council last time when we came before you, and we ended up breaking it up, because as Val's...
Megan, can you introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, yes, Megan Eckert, I'm sorry. One of the owners of the properties up there, one of the developers, builders, I guess. I wouldn't call myself a developer, just a builder. So this property is under contract to be sold. I don't have the buyer here with me tonight, but the buyer is on the same page as us as far as not really wanting to see a sidewalk go in there. If this was a flat piece of property with other sidewalks even close, I would not be here, let me assure you that. You know, I know a lot of people are saying it's our cost, I totally get that, and I'm not here to save the cost of it only. I mean, there's a lot that goes with it, you know, the topography up there. I'd emailed all of you asking, you just kind of drive by, take a look at the topography, and that really is the reason why I'm here. It's a very hilly site. I would say ours is the least hilly of the sites, actually, going south on Thirty-seventh down to Benjamin. It gets steeper even, even more trees. So as I look at this property and I think, okay, if we put a sidewalk in, that requires us to take out, you know, tens, twenty, thirty trees, and we visited, maybe that's not necessary, but there's a lot of tree removal, a lot of grading, a lot of, you know, possible retaining walls. It's hard for me to stomach removing trees, doing all that for a sidewalk that doesn't connect. And I'm not saying it never will, but I'm just saying there's a lot of sidewalk that needs to connect in Norfolk, and I fully support that. And as the city goes, and it goes before council, from what I understand, it has to be voted on even to order in sidewalks, I feel that this property will be a huge outlier. You know, there's sidewalks in the middle of town moving out that probably will be, you know, so it's hard to do all that right now when we don't really know the plan for sidewalks out there. So for us to change topography, take out a lot of trees, the buyer, the future buyer, you know, we've talked about the cost concern, and it's not our intention to leave them high and dry. So we have an agreement worked out that as long as they own the property, if sidewalks are ordered in, we'll pay for it down the road. So he's not concerned about it, they'd rather not see a sidewalk get put in. I think that's really, and you've got some pictures in here of what I'm talking about. It highlights our property, and then it highlights kind of some golf cart path issues that are on Eldorado Hills. A lot of their golf cart path looks like it would lie right where the sidewalk would have to go. So I just, it's a very complex thing, because are they going to move their golf cart path to put a sidewalk in? I know there was discussions last time about maybe sharing the path, but I don't know that a private course would share the path as a public sidewalk. I don't know that that makes much sense. And then the second picture is just showing where the next closest sidewalk is, and I, from the assessor's website, I see that it's about three thousand feet of sidewalk that would need to fill from the south edge of our property to the next closest sidewalk. So, and again, all of it being very hilly, tree-filled terrain, so not flat, you know, inner-city... So, not flat, you know, inner-city type terrain. So, that's why I'm here today asking for the waiver because I just, I don't want to see trees taken out and a sidewalk put in that may end up being totally different in the future when sidewalks or trails get put out there. So, I would also draw your attention across the Thirty-seventh to the west side of Thirty-seventh Street. It's very flat, there are no trees. So, if a curb gutter paving system goes up there and a trail goes along Thirty-seventh, it might make more sense to put it on the other side of the road where there are no trees and the land is pretty level. So, that's what I got for you. Any questions for me?
Megan, I noticed in your, the text that you have attached to your application for waiver.
Yeah.
Just as, just as a point of order, you mentioned that is for Evergreen Hills Golf Course.
Say it again.
It's mentioned in here it's for Evergreen Hills Golf Course. I think you probably need to change that to Eldorado Hills.
I'm sorry, that's a golf course in doubt.
Yeah.
Eldorado.
I know, I know.
My mistake, yes.
No, I just noticed that.
Eldorado Hills, yes.
Knew it was and that was, was what was on your application, so.
Oh, shoot.
Just a little typo for you.
That's a battle pre showing.
That's my battle pre, yes.
Any questions for Megan on this?
Yeah. Only on the north side to put the sidewalk in. We got rid of some trees there on the north. And then we took out, I think, two trees to get dump trucks in and out to dig the foundation on the south. So, not really, we really tried hard, you know, it being up to Thirty-seventh, part of the reason we wanted those lots, you know, because they sat for quite a while, being vacant lots. So, we just liked the tree, you know, the in-town, out in the country type of feel that they provided. So, we tried to leave as many trees as possible. So, no, we haven't taken out very many trees.
Megan, I drove by and what I was noticing though, you said there's a lot of trees there.
Yeah.
A lot of the trees are the cedar tree, which is considered Nebraska's ragweed tree. So, I mean, they encourage farmers to pull them out when they're out in their field. I think why those developed there is because that didn't occur. So, it's not a very good-looking tree or a very sustainable tree.
It does provide a lot of road noise density from the Thirty-seventh Street road, though. You know, if you think about the people sitting on their decks on those properties, the trees really give them a lot of privacy from Thirty-seventh. So, the north side, I think we took out all cedar trees, those were those trees there. The south has a lot, I don't know what kind of trees there are, but there's, there's mix of trees over there, so.
The, what I was noticing, the majority of them were cedar trees, which they're not, you know, you could talk to the tree board to see what they think about them too, but they're not a real conducive landscape tree.
Sure.
So, I, when I was reading this, it, it kind of dawned on me, and I don't know if the Planning Commission asked or not at the time, if you were granted this waiver, would you be designating an area that, that if the sidewalk was ordered in, that it could go in that way? On your, on the plat that way, that's filed. It's kind of like a easement.
A placeholder type thing?
Well, it's an easement. So, it keeps you from putting things in there. If you put things in there, so you go in there and you put a bunch of rock landscaping in there and when we order the sidewalk in in a year's time, that goes out and it's at your own expense.
Sure. I did meet with the engineers today up at the site and we kind of talked about where a sidewalk might fit. So, what we would do is we would do as much grading as possible to that area and we would arrange sprinklers such that there are no sprinkler heads in that area. I mean, we'd make it as easy as possible if a sidewalk would get ordered in to be placed there. So, we're not putting landscaping beds or sprinkler heads or anything like that there. So, yes and no as much as we can. But again, you know, who knows where the sidewalk will go? I mean, if you guys have a comprehensive trail plan or something that hits up that way, it might land on the other side of the road and then I still have a sidewalk that just sits by itself, you know? So, that's, again, that's kind of the concern and why I'm here today. If it was a flat, normal piece of land, we would have put the sidewalk in and been done with it. I would not have come in front of you twice to ask for the waiver.
So, Steve, did we meet up there or not, or are you aware of it, or?
We did. So, this afternoon at about three-thirty, three o'clock or so, we met out there. She wanted us, Megan wanted us to see the site and see the challenges that she was expressing. Mike, Mike and I, Assistant City Engineer and I, went out there and met with her. And we had the conversation that, you know, at some point, either the council's going to call it in tonight or it would be called in in the future. And we identified where that traditional sidewalk would be. You know, it would be adjacent to her property, not inside her property, but adjacent to the, to the property boundary. We asked that they not haul any more dirt out, that, you know, it would be, if they do have excess material on site and so they've been, kind of been hauling that out a little bit through construction. Well, if we call a sidewalk in and they've got to fill it in in order to meet minimum grades, that's going to be added expense. So, we just requested that they not haul any more out, blend that into that hillside as much as they can, so that that is there. You know, we did express, we did not know what council would do tonight. And so they needed to be prepared for either direction on that. From what I can tell, looking at the site with some, with some minor clearing, and again, minor majors in the eye of the beholder, with some minor clearing in there, I do think it would be possible for them to get sidewalk to the backside of the property and meet the ADA five percent maximum grade. Without, I'm almost going to hedge my, hedge my bet a little bit, say without retaining wall, but that, that would have to be seen. When I look at the, you know, I certainly agree that it's a challenging site for them. It's a challenging site to put sidewalk in. And we have to have some decision and plan on where we would go from there. If we don't, if we extend the waiver, I guess a few thoughts on that. It does provide us a mechanism to come back when we do have a plan, be that maybe a ten-foot trail on either side or something. We would be able to assess them for their portion of that project if we didn't call it in tonight. We would have that ability to capture that as a function of that project. I did look at it to see if there would be any possibility of trying to keep a sidewalk more up and adjacent to Thirty-seventh Street. I do not believe that we have the adequate shoulder width right, up there right now, at least all the way from that particular property down to Benjamin Avenue to get something in shoulder side. So, that, that would not be a possibility. I did talk about that a little bit in the planning session, so I just wanted to mention that here. It certainly is possible, as you, as Megan mentioned. We are looking at a, about a five to seven-year plan where we would start calling in sidewalks within the core of the city and start working our way out. We recognize that a community that has connecting sidewalks is a safer community for the citizens. And I think the council, you know, as a, as a function of not wanting to grant waivers, recognizes that and we want to move that direction. I would say it is very possible, along all of our major arterials and minor arterials, that we're going to desire bike lanes or multi-use, these ten-foot multi-use trails. This would be a major arterial for us. And I think the long-term vision there is going to be ten-foot sidewalks or ten-foot trails, not our traditional four or five foot.
So, with that being said, do I read into your comments that it would be somewhat reasonable to offer the, the waiver at this point in time? Mainly because we're not real sure whether it's going to be, you know, a traditional sidewalk or whether it would be a trail. But that being noted, the, I mean, the stipulate, you know, it's already out there that, that, that waiver's attached to the property. And so, in thirty years from now, if I have the same property owners come back that were talking about water and sewer earlier and say that they don't want a trail in there, we, this was attached and this was known, so. Three years I'll be dead, but.
And I guess, just echoing that, could, would it be accurate to say that would be a staff suggestion to grant the waiver at this time for purposes of mid-to-long-term trail planning in the area to promote connectivity and safe pedestrian traffic?
That is correct. You know, I'd, I'd like some, some more time to look at. You mentioned, you know, the possibilities connecting down through the, through the golf course and then what, what happens south of that. There are some potential opportunities there. I, I would like an opportunity to pursue that a little bit more before we would make any final decisions. So, yes, I think I would be in favor of the waiver.
Can we just table this?
I have, we're under contract for the property, so it will, I mean, we're supposed to close August tenth. So, I believe for an occupancy permit, I might have to have this figured out. I don't know if I can table it. I'd have to find that out. Anybody else here know?
If we grant the waiver.
If you grant the waiver, but if you table it as a discussion item again, will that?
Then it's not resolved. I, I would be in favor of a waiver. We can pull that waiver back at any time. To me, it's just as effective as tabling it.
And it's probably a little more effective than tabling it because it allows them to move forward with designated area there. It's a waiver that's attached to the property. And so, it's an element that goes along with the deed, I'm assuming, so.
So, if we've not, I think for the record, we want to make clear that we want a direct staff to undertake planning purposes for long-term trail connections in the area. With that in mind, and really only that in mind, moving forward with a waiver for this portion at this time.
And that being said, it would not surprise me if within a six-month time period, basically bringing us into the two thousand nineteen construction season, that this council may say, hey, we want it in, so.
And I, I'm always, I'm in favor of it as long as it goes somewhere. You know, that's my biggest rub here. I don't want to put it in and let, and see it sit for twenty years, you know? So, that, that's fine with me.
Yeah. And the caveat is at that very point in time, it may not go someplace, but there may be plans for it to go someplace, so.
Yeah, I think the background on this, when you first, first brought it forward, we were dealing with many cases in which waivers had been granted and they presented challenges then to us and connections within city limits. And I don't think it's in the interest of this council anymore to do that unless an occasion like this arises where we may, we may not be completely ready to know exactly what type of walkway fits best. And we don't want to order in without knowing how, how the connection's best made. So, I think that, yeah, I think that's the point here. The only reason we would be considering doing this now is because there's a potentiality for fitting this walkway into broader trail context, yeah. Any other questions or comments, council? Thank you, Megan.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? If none, Planning Commission report, please, Beth.
On April eighteenth, twenty seventeen, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the application for a temporary waiver of subdivision regulations submitted by JMOA Investments. The waiver of minimum subdivision sidewalk requirements was requested from those set out on chapter twenty-three dash forty-two on properties addressed as sixteen-twenty and sixteen-thirty North Thirty-seventh. Request was tabled and removed them, the table for discussion and action at the July third, twenty eighteen Planning Commission meeting. The applicant has installed the sidewalk on property addressed as sixteen-thirty North Thirty-seventh. The Planning Commission recommends approval of a temporary sidewalk waiver on property addressed as sixteen-twenty North Thirty-seventh until sidewalks connect on a five to two vote.
Okay, please move.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item number twenty-seven, I would look for a motion to consider approval of a second renewal agreement between the city EHPV Lottery Services LLC, doing business as Big Red Keno, and Endgame Lottery Services LLC, doing business as Big Red Keno.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. And Danny, would you give us some background on this, please?
Yes, thank you. This agreement that you're looking at is the second renewal agreement between the City of Norfolk and Big Red Keno. They've been our operator for the last ten years. This is just the second renewal that will renew this for an additional five years so that this particular agreement will expire on August third of twenty twenty-three. Also included in your agenda packets is a list of expenditures from our Keno revenue since the city began Keno in two thousand and eight and it reflects at least two-point-four million dollars in community expenditures since the game started in our community.
Okay, thank you, Danny. Questions for Danny on that? I want to allow an opportunity for discussion on this for anyone who wants to come forward at this time.
Mr. Mayor, council members and, and city staff, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. We really appreciate the time and, and thank you very much for the opportunity to work here in the community of Norfolk for the last ten years. It's, it seemed to have gone by very quickly. I guess time flies when you're having fun, right? It was, it was really great to, to be up here for the last ten years. We love this community, we love the people, we love doing business here. It's, it's been a tremendous opportunity for us and one of the great opportunities that's been presented to our company over the years and we're very appreciative of that. And we've worked hard, we've tried to work really hard over the last ten years to, to earn your trust and to, and to hopefully keep your trust. We're, we're very excited about where Norfolk's headed in the future. We just see good things ahead for the city. And so, if, should you decide to renew our contract, which we, we hope you would do and ask, ask that you would, we're very excited to get that next five-year term started. Regarding the renewal, I think the best predictor of future performance is past performance and we're, you know, we're proud of our past performance. I think we've done a good job for the city, we've worked hard. I don't, I don't know if you all saw the sheet, and I have some extras if you didn't get a copy of this, but we kind of tried to summarize the monies we've raised for the city for community betterment for the last ten years. The monies we've put into the Memorial Field Burger with the forty-four thousand and the monies for Pickles for Youth Sports, seventy-eight thousand. And then our newest initiative, which we've been doing for three years, is our, is our Grant to the Math and Science, which we've done twenty-three thousand over the last three years. And we look forward to that continuing in the schools, have done a great job with that program as well. So, we really have tried to be a good community partner and give back. We want to continue to, to do that over the next five years if you decide to renew us. And the other thing I want to say that I'm very appreciative for is for all of our satellite partners, some of whom are here tonight, and I know they want to speak. And, you know, we've got a tremendous group of satellite partners, they work really hard. The bar business is a very hard business. If you've never been engaged in that business, it's, it's one of the toughest businesses out there. And these folks, and I, and I can say that with some knowledge because we run some bars ourselves within our company and so I know it's a hard, hard business. And, and these folks work really hard. And I know Keno, running Keno is, is a bar is a hard business. You know, you've got customers clamoring for a beer and then they also want a Keno ticket and what do you do and you got to prioritize. And so, and so they've worked very hard for you over the fast, over the last ten years and are definitely appreciative, I mean, are definitely deserving of your appreciation as well. They're good, they're good people and good community members. The bars had come to us as a group and, and asked that we increase their commissions. And I think, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about this. We've met with each of the locations individually. And their request was that we increase the commission from five percent to seven percent. And we told them we're just not able to, to meet that demand. It's economically, it just doesn't work for us to continue to do the things we've done and, and to try to really run a good game. And we also would put our satellite contract and arrangement up against anybody else in the state as far as how hard we work to. as far as how hard we work to try to make this a good game for the satellites in terms of keeping the game fresh, running specials, doing marketing, making sure their equipment's up and running, providing supplies. So we really try to do a lot, you know, to help with that as well. And so to change that percentage just overall like that, it would really not work with the economics of how we've designed that game over the last 10 years and, and longer and, and worked in other communities as well. But we didn't want to just say, no, take it or leave it. You know, these have been good business partners for us to work with. So we wanted to come back to the table with something. And what we came back with was a plan to pay the satellites 7% on new, on new play. So basically what we, what we asked is that if they increased play each year, we would pay 7% on that, on the new play. And we were willing to start that immediately. And in fact, what we've offered to do for the satellites, just to give them some incentive and for their time and attention to this matter, we've offered to go back with everybody for a year as if we had that program in place for a year and pay them the commission they'd have earned if that had been in place for the last year. So in, in regard to all the satellites, with many of them, that amount was, was over $1,000. And we, and we wrote them a check to that that's payable immediately, you know, if they're, if they're accepting of that deal. And with everybody, we just bumped the amount to $1,000 because again, we wanted to give them something for their time that they've spent on this issue. So the minimum that we were willing to pay for that re-signed bonus was, was $1,000. And of the nine locations, the eight here in town and Village Inn and Hater, four so far have, have accepted that, that deal. So, so we do have four. And I know the others are, you know, want to have, want to say their piece tonight. And I respect that and, and encourage them to do so. And we'll continue discussions. That offer remains available to them. And we'll continue discussions with them depending on, you know, how your vote goes tonight. We'd like to continue those discussions after this meeting. And I'm hopeful, eventually, I'm hopeful we can convince most people to, to sign up for that because I do think it's a, it's a better deal than what they have. And, and we think it's a fair offer. With that, I, I don't have a lot else. I, I really am very appreciative again of your time and of the opportunity and happy to answer any questions you might have.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted on the record that I have had a couple of those bar owners call and support your agreement. Because of that contract bonus, I guess you'd call it, they're, they're anxious to get that money in their business and get it going. So I just wanted to say that they have called.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't think I had you state your name for the record.
Oh, Mayor, you're right. I, I missed that. It's, it's Bill Harvey and I'm general counsel for Big Red and, and one of the owners.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to comment?
Gordy Karas. I own the old lounge. I've heard some discussion. Bill and I went around with this before. Dave, I don't agree with you on this. $1,000? Are you serious? My business did, and I'm just going to throw out a number here at you. It's more than this, but for easy figuring, $200,000 in Keno last year over that. But I'm going to use the word, the number 2,000, 200,000. We have to pay $50 every month for a secure line that comes into the bar. So that's $600 that comes out of there. You take away the 5% that we're supposed to get, that comes to $10,000, less the $600 is $9,400. $9,400. And I want to ask you guys, would you work for that?
If you didn't have that $9,400 in your business, so you'd have your regular business.
If I didn't have that $9,400 in my business, we didn't have any trouble doing all this before without Keno.
That's true.
So it's not the Keno.
I don't want to argue with you, Gordy, because I, you know, we talk all the time. But if you didn't have that, I mean, that's a pretty good piece of the pie. You don't have to have Keno in there, do you? If you don't want to pay those expenses?
You're right.
So, I mean, you're, you're getting $9,400.
We do have it. I just think we need to be paid for. I mean, we're doing all the work.
I, I'm not disagreeing with you because I, I used to own a business where we sold pickle card and stuff and, and lottery tickets. And it's a small percentage, but at least it's a, an additive to your business. That's what we look at. And I, and I'm not arguing with you because I agree with some of the things you're saying, so.
Well, that's $9,600. That's, you're, you're talking, we're talking. In fact, I don't even know what the last, oh, figure was, what you just said. 2.4 million? Is that what we're talking about? I mean, we're not asking for the world. We're asking to be fair. And even 7%, it only comes up to 14,000. So it's not like we're asking for the world. We just want to make it worthwhile for our employees and for the business.
Gordy, I'm curious, have you looked at other places across this, yeah, across the state where you think satellites are, are getting a better deal or being treated more fairly?
Well, I think that Big Red's hands are tied. I'm talking, the city gets 12.5%, I understand. Is that correct? I need some answers here. Is that true?
Yeah, and we pay the 2% Keno tax.
So that's 10 and a half. You're allowed 10, right? Right?
Under state law, I don't believe there's a maximum.
At least 10%.
Our contract guarantees this.
Yes, please, yeah.
I, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a limit on the city's compensation.
Okay.
I know, I know there are cities that, that do, you know, have different percentages. There's cities that get less and there's cities that get more than Norfolk does.
Well, what I'm getting at, isn't there a half a percent we can work with? We also found out that there's over $100,000 worth of unclaimed money. Unclaimed money. Couldn't that be spread out amongst the satellites? Since we're the ones who did that? I mean, we're the ones who wrote the tickets. I mean, somebody just didn't go collect it. My, my understanding is that it goes to the city. Is that fair? I mean, I, I would like to hear some, and I just don't want to be the only one talking here. I need somebody else to talk.
Where does the unclaimed money go?
If I, if I mind it, the, the unclaimed money by state law actually has to go to the city. It amounts to, you know, about half a percent over time. That's, that's actual unclaimed prizes. A half a percent of the gross, of the gross wager. And that, and that does go to the city.
And is, is that unclaimed money? Can you tell what physical location that came from?
Yes, we would be able to tell that by, we would be able to tell that, I believe, because the tickets are all identified. And so we know what location those came from.
Okay.
But here's the, but here's the problem. The problem is that by law, the city's expense limitation is maxed out. And so for the city, and, and I hear what Gordy's saying. I mean, I, and again, I sympathize because they do, you know, the bars work very hard here. The, the problem comes down to the problem of state law, which is that with the city maxed out and paying 14% expenses, then that goes to, that goes to Big Red. Then you share someone's satellites and pay all the other expenses in the game that someone just talked about earlier. There's not, the city is not allowed to pay any additional money. So even if you want to take part of your community betterment money and pay that to the satellites, it's, as a matter of state law, that wouldn't be permitted. That's, that's really the crux. So, and I don't, and I'm not here to apologize for the state statutes. I didn't write them. And I have a lot of arguments with those guys over the years. But, but that's, that's really the crux is even if we want to take part of that community government or the unclaimed, that'd be a violation of state law. That's the problem.
But it's not a violation of state law for the city to get it.
That's right. By state law, the city has to get that.
Any other questions for Gordy? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment?
My name's Larry Palmer. I'm trustee down at the Eagles Club. The satellites that we have right now, I think they said we're down to eight. We're making that 2.4 million for the city. The city doesn't have to do a thing to get it. But the satellites do. Our bartenders, I'll tell you what, when we shut down, I believe it was about a year and a half, two years ago, and we shut down for three weeks, we had the happiest bartenders in town. And it's just that people can be so rude and obnoxious. And that's, this is what Gordy's talking about, is that we just want a, a fair shake on the deal. We're making the city 2.4 million. Now, don't you think the city should be interested in our feelings? Because we're the ones that making it for it. You know, I, I feel that the city should be backing us up and encouraging us. And it's a, it's kind of a never-ending deal. I know that and I, I realize that. But that's about all I have to say. It's just that we actually feel that we do work for the city. We're bringing that 2.4 to you guys. And we feel that we should get a fair shake and that the city should be interested in what we're doing and that we're getting a fair shake of it because you're making the majority of the money. We're not. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment? Thank you.
The only thing I would like to say about what he just said was if we make 2.4, we give it all back to the citizens because we put it into our parks or roads or wherever we designate it for. So it gets returned right back to the citizens. So we are giving it back. And we're not just keeping it in, like in our business or anything like that. So it does get returned to the citizens.
I think it's a good point, Councilman Faust. And to mention as well that the agreement, the contract between the operator and the satellites, just that between them. By state law, we, we do collect money from this as in many cases that relate to gambling and, and estate by virtue of public policy. And we could go through the list of community betterment projects that have been assisted through the money collected through Keno. So while I understand the, the concerns being expressed tonight, it's not like that, that money sits in a pot just to someday be used by, by the city. It goes straight into community betterment projects through, through parks and rec and economic development, so.
And I, I'd like to add too, that we do care about you guys. If we didn't have you satellites, we would have zero in that pot. And we would not have as good a parks. We would not have as good a roads. So we do care about you and we do support you. And we do talk to these people when they came to us with our agreement. And, and we knew about all this. Asked them if there's anything they could do. And we, we worked a little bit for you too, which you don't see. I know that. But we do care about you because if, if you didn't work hard, we get nothing. So it's not that we don't care.
And we did try to evaluate systems where it's done, other places, and how to do this most efficiently and most fairly. So I do want to allow for any other discussion on this. If anyone else wishes to come forward? Seeing none. Any further discussion, council? Comments or questions? Okay. If none, I would ask for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
That concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. Good evening.